I'd like to call to order this, um, working, special call, working session, May twentieth, six P M., Bath County High School Auditorium. Uh, discussion of tonight's agenda. Item three, the consent agenda.
I would ask the board, uh, during the day today, we had several items coming in like trips and fundraisers, things like that, that were added in there. Mostly, I think it was in grants and trips. There were some additions, so as you look through, they have been, they were uploaded earlier today, but if you hadn't looked in there, so there's been changes, so please, uh, note those changes. And then outside the regular consent agenda, there are several items. Five J is intermittent medical leave. We have an employee, you can take one year with paid, and then the second year, the board has to prove it. And so we have an employee who has a serious, uh, medical issue or family issue, uh, would be very generic in there, and they're just requesting be on the, on our, still on the payroll for a second year, but they'll, it's without pay. And so the board just needs to grant that for them, so that, the hope is that they can get better, or their family member can get better and then come back to work.
The second one was resolved?
The second one was, uh, KB was, uh, resolved and was removed. And so that person has chosen to retire. Five K, UK Healthcare Sports Medicine, that's an annual renewal, so that we can have our athletic trainers for extracurricular activities. Uh, they were last year, and I believe this year, the only, the bidder for that. Uh, five L, accept new bid on food ser- first, no, sorry. Accept new bid on food service vehicle from Dutch's Automotive, a twenty twenty-two GMC Yukon. Five M, New Horizons, that's through K E D C, that's a, that's a school where we take, try to get our homeschool kids to join New Horizons, and then we get, they become a member of our school district, and, uh, we get the funding for that. And last year, I think they were only doing high school, I know they were only doing high school, and we only really had about four or five students. Uh, they're trying to expand it as they're going, so we're just asking that we renew the MOU again for one more year. M C T C, five N, M O A, that's an annual renewal to provide dual credit opportunities for our high school students. Five O, Mountain Comp Care, M O U, that's a collaboration to provide mental health services to children in Bath County School System through School Based Mental Health Services. Five P, Big Benchmark Advanced Twenty Twenty Two Contract. State has required all school districts to adopt a new reading series meeting specific criteria. After review of the programs and input from the staff, the recommendation is accept the Benchmark Advanced Program. Five Q, Principles Combining Budget for All Activities, that's the principles, uh, the budget, it's a red book requirement that shall be approved by the board each May. Five R, Accept Traditional Bank Two-Year Service Agreement, asking that Traditional Bank continue to serve as our banking institute for an additional two fiscal years through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Five S, Community Eligibility Provision, the C E P, that requires board approval, that's, uh, meals at no cost to our students. Five T, National Lunch School, National School Lunch Program, indirect costs, approval required to collect indirect costs from food service at the non-restrict rate approved by K D E. And then five U, on the, your attachments on the agenda, at the last meeting when we appro- approved the salary scale, there was some minor confusion, I believe it mostly laid in, we took a five percent for certified, we took a dollar for classified, but we have classified on a certified scale. And so it's really the question is that, just to review the salary scales as we have them, and, and ensure that they're accurate before Mr. Combs posts them on our website. So those are the consent agenda items.
Okay, so I wanted to discuss, uh, and just to really ask a question, just clarify something. On the salary schedules, when you look at certified, and, and this may just be a technicality, but I just want to make sure, let me find it. I'm looking at it.
There, this number two on the page.
Okay, so when you look at it, you see the five percent increase right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you go to classified salary, it does not say that at the top. Now, the numbers may, you know, actually be correct, uh, and everything's there, but it does not say that. I just want to make sure that that's clarified, and that that is, actually, it doesn't say anything right there. Just to make sure it's clarified. Do you think it's correct or not correct?
Well, that's what we were asking for you all to look at, make sure that's correct. But Ms. Combs, did we do that by a dollar per hour or five percent? That's correct. Yes, sir. Ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
But the classified salaries are getting something. The, the five percent or the dollar based on which is best? Okay. And, and the only thing, it just didn't say it, and I guess that's why it didn't say it, so I just want to make sure that, I just want to clarify.
And that's just, I believe, the point we have it on there, is to make sure that our, that before we publish it, we're good to go, and we know that we're publishing the correct, what the board was asking us to do.
Any other discussion? Okay. Item four, discussion of the F Y twenty-five tentative budget.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the tentative budget is basically the best estimate that we have at this time for the next fiscal year, so we're talking about fiscal year twenty-five, um, of revenues and expenditures. We have gotten a SEEK forecast for next year, so I'm just gonna highlight some, um, main points for the tentative budget. So SEEK has been entered at an amount of nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the SEEK base has gone up in the legislative bill that was passed, it's at four thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars per pupil this year. This past year, the, the year that we're currently in, it was forty-two hundred a student. Um, I want to point out that C E R S matching rates have gone down this year to nineteen point seven one, and I have continued to, um, match that at twenty-six point seven nine, because in the past few years, it has continuously climbed up, and I want to be sure that we have enough budgeted in our county retirement, so I have left it at a higher rate in case it were to jump back up next year. Um, as you can see, I've continued, uh, funding in all of the areas that you all usually fund in, which are P D, textbooks, all of the positions that you usually fund for, with, with the addition of two itinerary interventionists, like you approved with the salary schedules. I do have budgeted for one virtual school instructor. All of the allocations that you all approved, the May one allocations, are in the budget with an additional two aid positions in case we were to need those. And then there are some vacant positions right now in special ed that I have budgeted for, for next year, if we were to fill those. I've budgeted for four full-time preschool classroom teachers with aids. I've increased all of the insurance, uh, amounts, just because the insurance continues to increase. I have budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the potential purchase of two buses. The beginning balance is listed at seven million. For last year's tentative, we were at five point six million. Um, that was the tentative beginning balance. Our actual beginning balance was around six point three, so for this tentative budget, I'm estimating it to be around seven million even. And of course, um, I included the funding for the four S R O officers to continue that. And the last item that you all would find the most interesting, I guess, is the contingency is in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is three point seven. We're required by statute to keep two. Of course, I did beef up some other areas of maintenance and that type thing, especially at the middle school area. Um, so, any questions on that?
Sounds good.
You, I didn't know if they need you for the next one. It's the, the K S G.
Item five, discussion of the F Y twenty-four audit contract with K G S G P S C.
So you all have already approved accepting their bid. Uh, this is just the actual contract that we have to send to the state.
I do have a, a question about, it says the fee will be agreed upon, was that in their bid? I didn't remember.
Yeah, it was. It, it stayed the same as last year, seventeen thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody good?
Thank you, Ms. Combs.
I think we're good, Brittany. Thank you. Item six, discussion of the K E D C twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five Cooperative Membership Agreement.
That's me, I'm sorry, I was, I thought we'd moved on to something else. K E D C is Kentucky Educational Development Cooperative. Uh, we've been a member forever, they provide outstanding services to us, they provide P D and, and lots of other things, and this is just the, just like the others, it's an annual renewal membership, and asking that the board approve that, so that our teachers and staff can continue to receive their services.
Item seven, construction update, discussion of the change order proposal for P R ten, owner requested stormwater re- remediation. Change order proposal for P R eleven, o- owner requested welding booth power modifications, and change order proposal for P R twelve, owner requested welding shop lighting controls.
Hi, y'all. So I'll touch on each of them briefly. So the first one, number ten, uh, for the Levek Project, that one is to modify, widen, and deepen the very, uh, nearby pond near the football field. Uh, it would also include fencing, and it would reduce the water trickling out of its current pipe. Uh, but for what I want you to know is that everything included in that bid, uh, would be addressed by, uh, Blaze under the Levek Project. It's just that when it comes to one utility, a light pole, that is technically by K U. And so as far as our research has found, K U should be able to relocate that one light pole that's literally in the pond right now, uh, but that's the only number that's not quantified in this amount for a hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Everything else will be taken care of by Pax Walker and Blaze. I just want to make you aware that, uh, when the contractor notifies this K U, and that K U decides to, to, I don't know, uh, invoice for something, that is technically not incor- incorporated in here, because it's outside, outside the contract at that point. Uh, but from our conversations with K U, it shouldn't be any money, but I don't want to tell you that, and then it ends up being a bill, so, um, if it does become a matter, you know, we can try to negotiate with them, but that is the one scope item that's not covered in the quote for P R ten.
You said one hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes, one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes, I'd just like to add, now, one, part of that money is for, uh, the alternate, and that's the work to re- regrade the ditch, okay? I, I met with, uh, Mr. Lucas, I think that's his name, and if I may, Jonathan, do you mind passing out something?
I'm sure he showed you where that water was eroding under his swimming pool and back deck.
Yes. Well, I had a, maybe, maybe I didn't bring it. Anyway, I, I did meet with him, and, and the problem is actually that, that area is laying, it's, it's relatively flat, and so actually what we're gonna do is not build up the sides of the ditch, we're actually going there and try to make it steeper, so the water won't pond there, and what it's doing is just saturating the ground, and then it's seeping underneath and finding a path, and it's coming in, uh, you know, back of his, uh, slope, that slope behind his house, getting under his pool and stuff, so I, I, I think this, uh, eight, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, will, will take care of that. And, uh, actually, that number, I, hopefully that'll, it'll, it'll be less than that. So, uh, that came late today, I hope. Christie, I don't know if you got anything on that or not, but, okay. Anyway, it'll be revised downward slightly, okay? The hundred and twelve maybe? Well, that's what I was hoping to get from the contractor, so I, I think it may be, uh, forty, forty-two fifty, something less, so probably less than a hundred and ten thousand total, to do all, all the work. So maybe y'all could approve the not to exceed? That would be my recommendation on the not to exceed this amount. Cause I think that the, the final number will be slightly less.
Does it make sense what these two areas are that, that we're talking through? So we're talking about the pond first, and then the area near the, uh,
The far end of the project.
The very far end of the Schnauk building is the part that we get dug out deeper, as David described, and it's not the actual pond itself, the place he's talking about, but if you have clarifications on where we're talking, clarify.
Yeah, so you got, uh, base bid, hundred and three, eight fifty, that's up near the football field, okay? Then, uh, that second number, alternate, that's the regrade the ditch down there toward the Schnauk, there by Mr. Lucas.
So, so the total was the one twelve?
Yes, includes both, both locations.
So then, moving on to P R eleven for the Levek Project, that one is to provide additional power outlets to each of the, uh, welding booths themselves. So the welding booths that were ordered, they were paired to work with a certain kind of connection for the welders themselves, uh, the welding units themselves, and because the, uh, size of that unit, they had to find a smaller package to kind of connect the, the equipment, but then ultimately, they still needed a one twenty volt outlet to make the final connection. So that provides one additional outlet at every, uh, every booth location, so fourteen total. That total number for the power would be fifty-five hundred dollars. For a total of fourteen, um, one hundred and twenty volt outlets. And keeping with the welding, but really it's welding and carpentry, um, the scope of the project was to upgrade the, the lighting fixtures themselves, um, but the way that the, uh, teachers currently turn off the light is using a switch in the main panel box, and clearly that's not ideal. So because the lighting gets upgraded in there, but the controls weren't not, we're not gonna get upgraded in that scope, um, we've, we priced in six thousand dollars to get, um, a few three-way switches installed in the carpentry lab and the welding lab, so they can turn off and turn on the lights for multiple locations, where instead, they were using the, the main panel to turn off and turn on the lights. If I didn't say it already, that would be six thousand dollars.
So what you're saying is to turn the lights on, they have to flip a s- a switch on the breaker?
Yes, so the way that it was reported to the contractors, um, is that, yeah, they currently go to the main panel switch and turn it off and turn it on, um, if they, if they couldn't get it from one existing light switch. And to fix that all the way around from different doors, they made it three-way switches for both labs, and they made sure that they had full connection in the labs themselves.
Any other questions for Mr. Rhodes or Jonathan?
Um, I can briefly talk about progress, uh, at overview, if David wants to go into more detail about progress. Uh, Levek wise, we're definitely wrapping up on the interior, we're about, say, seventy-five percent done of the whole project. Do understand, though, that twenty-five percent remaining is a big haul over the summer of a lot of the site work, so that's your canopy, that's your new canopy sidewalk, it's your parking improvements, it's a lot of work that still is to do, but a lot of it's on the outside. So, uh, coming this fall, it should be pretty much done with the building itself, and wrapping up a lot of the stuff out around the building, and technically around the high school, cause the high school site work is a part of Levek. But the high school progress overall, I would say is closer to be fifty-six, fifty-seven percent, uh, but that's only because it trickles along per phase, um, and there might not be much progress on windows, for example, holistically, but they might have finished a lot of the roofing. Um, so it's hard to tell you what parts are at fifty percent or m- or, or higher at the high school, but overall, you're about sixty percent down with the high school, and closer to eighty percent down with Levek, with most of that remaining for Levek is the outside of the building.
How many of the classrooms that the windows were leaking ha- has been fixed?
From my understanding, it was most of the second floor, uh, classroom wing here, what we're gonna call Area B across from the media center, those were fixed and replaced, but there might be more areas.
Thirteen windows to date, and I think there's like sixty-four to go that we'll be doing this summer. As Jonathan, uh, seems discussing the progress, we got a lot of work to do this summer. We'll be in a cafeteria, that's gonna be a big spot that we're gonna be hitting, location that we're gonna be hitting, uh, this summer.
I was just hoping that those classrooms that, uh,
Yeah.
hadn't been able to be used, would be, be ready to be used.
Right, well, we're planning to have all the windows replaced,
Okay.
uh, when they come back to school in August. All of them should be replaced. Now, the ones that we have, uh, repaired, uh, no leaks have been noticed, so hopefully we've stopped that.
And then beyond that, there's nothing further to mention, other than if there are questions about certain scope or certain progress, we can definitely talk about those.
I'm good. Anyone else? I think we're good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. So we're adjourned. Six twenty-three P M. 6:23 PM.
Call to order, this Board of Education regular meeting, May twentieth, twenty twenty four, seven P M.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Brenda, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take a moment for silent devotion. Thank you. Item four, superintendent in board communications.
This evening, I'd just very quickly like to say, as the year closes out, I want to quickly say how much I enjoyed watching our students grow and develop. From kindergarten promotion ceremonies to high school graduation, it is so encouraging to see all these, what all these students have accomplished. I want to wish our graduating seniors all the best as they move on to college and career. Also, I also wish to thank every employee in the district as each of them, in their own way, has made an impact on our students, and I applaud them for their efforts and dedication. Finally, I'm happy to report that we again had one hundred percent of our seniors graduate with zero dropouts for the second year in a row. Great things are happening in Bath County, and that is because of the great people that are making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Item five, discussion and possible action on approving the following items, item A through item U.
I'll make the motion to approve items five A through five U.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is public comments, but I don't have any public comments here. Item seven, presentation from Gateway Health Department, the oral health program informational item.
Hi, thank you guys for having us. We are with the Health Department, with Gateway District. We started an oral health program, and we really wanted to come and speak to you guys about it. Uh, my name, if you go, how do we change the slides? Do I do it? Okay. My name is Brooke Jones. I am the hygienist, and I'm also the director of our program. I was born and raised in Morehead, and I have a history in our community in the dental field. I was also an E M T and a nurse. I got married and moved to Harlan County. My husband was a coal miner there for ten years. Uh, when coal mining started going crazy, we decided to back up and hunt, and I went to hygiene school to come back to work in my parents' dental office. I then went on after a few years there and started working in an F Q H C, and through my networking there, I got a job with the Department of Public Health in U K in a data collection program. I was the regional coordinator over the twenty-six eastern counties in Kentucky. Through that experience, I found out about programs in our health departments that went around in our schools serving the children of our areas with preventative dental care for free. These programs don't affect dental benefits and leave those benefits intact for our children. I really thought about it, and public health has always been a big part of my life. It pulls to my heart, and I am a big advocate for our children. I'm a member of the Kentucky Dental Hygiene Association, the Kentucky Youth Advocates, and the Kentucky Oral Health Coalition. And through those programs and the networking and stuff, I really wanted to start a program in our area. So I emailed Greg Brewer and asked him for a job, and he felt like our passions aligned. Uh, the Health Department Board agreed, and so I started up the program. In the year and a half I've been there, we have established two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants. I got us a van, all of our equipment, and we are now signed with M O As in Menifee, Morgan, Rowan, Elliott, and have served Carter as well, even though it's not a part of our district. So the only county we don't have is Bath. Um, since the, since starting the program, I grabbed on to Christie, and I'm gonna let her talk about herself, but she is now a part of our program too.
You guys probably know me. I'm Christie Coyle. I'm a local resident of Owingsville. Um, I've been married to Robbie Coyle for over fifteen years. We have two sons, Owen and Hudson, both of which had graduation ceremonies today in kindergarten and fifth. Um, I graduated from Bath County High School valedictorian in nineteen ninety-seven, and I went on to Morehead and got a bachelor of science. Um, then I went to medical school and completed a year of medical school before I decided it was not my passion, not gonna be my career. Um, then I worked in the medical field in a cardiology practice. I also worked in, um, as a sleep, sleep director doing sleep studies and did that for over twelve years. We moved back home to Owingsville, um, and we reside in my grandparents' house on Main Street. Um, and I started working for Bath County Schools. I've been here for about six years with the school system. And I started working part-time for Gateway doing the tobacco control coordinator position. And last year I went full-time with Gateway and just a few months ago became a dental assistant working with Brooke.
So what I really want to talk about is what a public health hygienist is, what we do, and how we can serve our areas. A public health hyg- well, a hygienist is a state and nationally board-tested mid-level provider in the dental world. So we go and take boards, we take a licensure, um, we have to go to school, we have a college degree. Um, to become a public health hygienist, you have to have additional hours, experience, and additional training. Uh, and then it's also kind of like an advanced certification on our license to allow us to work inside a school without a dentist present under standard protocols, much like a school nurse. You can find all those statutes and regulations in the Kentucky Dental Practice Act, which is chapter three one three in the Kentucky's revised statutes. There are several oral programs that are governed by our Kentucky State Dental Director, Dr. Julie Watts McKee. Um, they're not showing up so well on the slides, but the top three that we are involved in with Gateway is the Public Health Hygiene Program, the Kids Smile Fluoride Program, and the Kentucky Sealant Program. There are also, um, there's also the Rural School Fluoridation Program. Uh, that's only in Arlie Boggs Elementary now because that's the only school left on Wellwater. Um, and then we have the Fluoride Supplement Program. Those two, we don't participate in. This semester, uh, we started out in Morgan and Elliott, in addition to Rowan County, and have since expanded. I, I've, I've talked about that already. But we've since expanded, and now we're offering the full program, all the services that we provide in all of those counties. Um, so the next slide is what does a hygienist do? We focus on preventative services, meaning assessments, cleaning, fluoride, sealants, referrals. All of those are seriously important, but so are sealants, and we provide those as well. Um, we like to focus in on oral health education, nutrition, tobacco counseling. We provide resources and education materials to the kids. We focus on referrals, follow-up appointments, resources, and education for parents. So we don't just leave these kids, we don't just see them and then forget about them. We actually follow up, and we have a pretty strict, strenuous follow-up routine where we make sure that parents are aware of what is going on with their children. The main goal of our program is to establish kids in local dental homes. Local dental homes for our community, to grow our dental community, to establish a relationship between the school system and parents and dental homes. Uh, we collect data, we bring infographics back at the end of the school year, telling you what we've done, how much we've done, how much work we've put into it, how many kids that we've seen that were uninsured, how many kids who didn't have dental homes. Uh, we give reports to the F R C so they can use that for grants. It's what I use to get the funds we've already gotten. Um, and we support the schools. We don't just leave you and forget about you. We're here. I'm just down the road. And if you call me at any time, a teacher calls me, a F R C calls me, we, I have plenty of relationships to get these kids in places, um, quicker. Um, it helps to have somebody like that. Um, all of this is provided with zero out-of-co- out-of-pocket costs to the kids or their parents. No one's ever gonna get a bill. No one has to establish a payment plan. Um, uninsured, insured, we don't, it doesn't matter to us. We do not use dental benefits. We use Medicaid medical provisions, set aside by the state, just like a school nurse does. We're funded through grants as well, and the state. Um, and then I'm also working towards teledentistry for next year. It's another big grant with Delta Dental. Uh, we would be the second program in the state to do this, and I have, um, full hopes, and I'm a hundred percent driven to get that done. And we'll be providing more, uh, services, like S D F, which is on down in, in the slides.
We average, um, twenty-two thousand children seen across the state. And in the Gateway District alone, we average about two thousand kids that we see each year. Um, all of our services are reimbursed through medical provisions or grant funds, so again, there's no out-of-pocket expense. Um, the program is, um, convenient. It keeps kids in school out of pain. We focus on preventative care and education, and we work with our kids to reduce the fear of seeing a dentist or a hygienist. Um, and we also really strive to support our local dental providers by making a mutual agreement to get those kids seen in a dental home.
Um, we're not, we're, we're gonna go in and talk about the relationship between a dental home and a, and the school system here in a minute, but I just want to point out um, that that is the biggest goal of our program, is to establish a dental home. Um, mobile companies and mobile dentistry will never be a dental home. It will never be your next-door neighbor, your coach on your basketball team. It will never be, um, someone in your community. So that's, that's the goal, number one. Um, the services that we provide include fluoride varnish, which is beneficial for all ages. Um, it reduces the time out of class, invasive procedures, and costs for families, because it prevent, it's preventative. The way it works is it, um, it halts the metabolism of bacteria and acids in the mouth, the production of that bacteria, and kind of like the working systems of bacteria, it kind of messes with it and breaks it all down. So it stops the demineralization of enamel. On this next picture, you can see with poor dental care, poor oral care, and braces, what it does to children. We, we really want them in braces, but you want to be able to teach them how to take care of those teeth while they're in braces. And you can see on the next slide, proper oral care, fluoride, and what it does for kids with braces. Um, it's, there's a big huge change. Um, there's a huge difference. Um, fluoride also strengthens enamel, um, and it's been used to help treat lesions, and it plays a huge role in eliminating caries. You can have fluoride six times per year, twice from your pediatrician, twice from your dental office, and twice from a health department program like mine. This doesn't mean you can get it twice from a dental office and another for-profit dental company that comes along. You can get it twice from our health department and twice from a dentist. So there's a, there's a difference. Sealants are protective plastic coatings that go in the grooves of teeth. According to the A D A, if we can get sealants placed in, in molars when they erupt and on time, you can keep these kids almost up to a hundred percent protected from a cavity. A fun fact is in, oh, I'm not done with that slide, I'm sorry, but a fun fact is in one of the counties we went into in the fall semester, we placed seven hundred and seventy sealants. And that is in a county where there was another company coming in, and many kids had a dental home. Statistics are that fifty-seven percent of our Kentucky kids lack dental sealants, and they are a hundred percent preventable. It's not prioritized in a dental home, because that's, you know, we're, we're trying to put out fires in a dental home. But our, our program is set up, that's what we do. We want to do it. We want to place as many as we can, um, and for free. Um, we identify children at high risk. Uh, part of that is with the free reduced lunch program in the state. Um, all of our counties, uh, qualify. So why do we need a hygiene program here, a public health hygiene program? Well, I kind of have already touched on it, but I'm gonna talk to you a little bit more, because I'm so passionate about it. This is an infographic that I got from my friends at the Kentucky Oral Health Coalition. Although nine percent of our kids are only going without dental insurance, about sixty-three percent still experience cavities, forty-one percent go with untreated tooth decay, and fifty-seven percent lack dental sealants, like I said before. So we're still not doing a good job. Our oral health outcomes in our state are poor. And that shouldn't be the case at this time, and I want to make a difference. I want to change that for my community. I'm very, very passionate. I love our children. I, um, invest in the children of my area. The next page, uh, the important part, is that fifty-three percent of our kids, kindergarteners, came to school without a dental screening or exam. We are failing in that one. We can provide, uh, those for our kids, for free, from our program. The next slide shows you, uh, we kind of zoomed in on the counties that we serve. This kind of shows the percentage and the rates of kids that are utilizing their Medicaid benefits. In Bath County, I think it's forty-two to forty-seven percent are utilizing that, so that means more than half of those kids are not being seen anywhere. There is room for us. There is a need, and we can feel that. On the next page, I really don't have to focus on this, because I know you guys know this way more than I do. Um, but there are plenty of barriers to our kids, and we just want to help, you know, we want to help do the best we can. Um, our program goes through many hoops to get these barriers addressed. I just got it approved through the Health Department Board in one county for a lump sum of money for the kids that are uninsured, that have copays, emergency treatment is needed, uh, transportation, gas cards. I, I go, I will go to the ends of the earth for these children, because they are our children, our area, and we can make a difference. Um, so what makes this different? I'll kind of talk about this for just a second, even though we kind of already have to. Um, it's the next slide. There's a cycle of care in an established office. So you go, you get your teeth cleaned, you get exams, you get radiographs, fluoride, sealants, all of that's an initial visit. Then you have restorations by a dentist, then you get referrals if you're, if they're needed, to specialists. And then you have a hygiene visit six months later. If you put in an outside dental company that's for-profit, what happens? That's the next two clicks. So they use up those initial benefits, um, and that's not something that's, you know, per provider. It's not something you can hop to different places and keep using. You don't get tho- those benefits over. So what happens is when you show up with your child at a dental office, and this has happened, um, we can't do anything. We really can't. We're pigeonholed. Um, all of your benefits are used up, and you have to postpone treatment. Well, postponing treatment means make things get a lot worse and a lot more painful, which causes fear-driven treatment. Fear-driven treatment causes generational cycles that dental offices are bad. Dental offices are not bad. If you establish a home, a dental home, you check, you get checked regularly, and things are, are caught early, things don't have to hurt, ever. You learn how to take care of your mouth, and that's what we need to do. Um, changing this situation by adding in our P H R D H program, what does it do? Well, it does nothing. We, we don't affect that, um, at all. So, uh, we don't use up dental benefits. We can give all the things we give for free, so they can, we can refer them into a dental home, and these kids establish care. There's no question about, well, who picks up their six-month cleaning? Or who's following up to make sure they went and had that root canal? Or who's following up and making sure they went to the orthodontist? It's, it's, it's different. Um, there are several regula- regulations being placed, um, by the state, and just this last year, they did place a few, but they're not being followed as best they can be. They should provide you with, mobile dental companies should be providing school districts with an emergency referral source within seventy miles of the schools they are treating. Um, that way, in case something happens a week later, it starts to hurt, that you have somewhere to send these kids to. The problem is, is they don't normally have those. Um, and it is in the new, uh, the Dental Board just released a newsletter telling them that they are aware that there are many out there that are not following these regulations, so just an F Y I and a due diligence for you all. Um, the Health Department, because we are public health, we are void of those regulations. We are allowed to practice the way we practice, because we do it for free. Well, not technically for free, I shouldn't say for free. We do use grants and medical benefits. Um, going hand-in-hand with this, there is a lack of providers in our area. It's really hard to get into a dental home. So we don't want to take away from those services that are being provided. We just want to add to. Um, having more people, more eyes means less neglect. More opportunities is better for everyone. Um, those kids that are being seen by us can still be seen by anybody else. We don't affect that at all. The one thing that we do take away is that we put sealants on their teeth, and that should be permanent for two years. So nobody's gonna get another reimbursement for that. But the, the studies and the sources say that fifty-seven percent of Kentucky kids go without dental sealants. So I think there's still a need for us. Um, treatment plans are not being completed, so if you have more eyes and you have more charts out there, you know whose kids are not being seen and not getting this stuff taken care of, so more eyes, less, less neglect. And what about the kids without insurance, or the kids that have to pay out-of-pocket? It gets really expensive for families. Prevention, preventative care that's free is, is a benefit for everyone, so we can still do that. Um, my recommendation is to use us in addition to anything else you're using. It allows us to come in, put fluoride on, put sealants on. We'll see anyone and everyone. Whoever sends us in a consent, we will see. Uh, we will make it fun. We will never force them in a dental chair. We will never make it traumatic. Um, and we will try to work on ways to bridge a gap between the schools, our dental providers, and our parents.
The next slide, um, shows all of the schools served in the Gateway area. Um, a lot of those listed are Rowan County, and then you also see Morgan, Elliott. And we added, um, preschools in Head Start in Carter, Rowan, Elliott, and Morgan this year. Um, so the school you don't see listed there is Bath, so we're hoping to change that.
We've added in Menifee too, as well. They're not on the list, but we have added Menifee. So to recap, one more time, four to, three to four cleanings with our, our program, not just one to two. More eyes, less neglect. Frequent applications of fluoride means decreased caries or cavities, and an increase in oral health outcomes. Less fear and more fun with visits and hygiene. Local dentists are involved in establishing care with our children and are supportive of our programs. Oral health providers are in collaboration with teachers and nurses and frisks. Data is collected and helps bring providers here. This is a big, important one that I want you all to know. I'm involved with the state and the hell, uh, the oral health branches, creating some scholarships and loan reimbursements for our new dentists that are graduating. If you don't have any data out there, there's no need for them there. So if we don't have the data to show that there's a need for providers in our area, we can't fight for that, and I am personally fighting for more providers for our area. The data can help with funds, grants, um, and funds for you guys in schools, because we all know money talks. Money, we need money to work. Everybody does. Uh, the next page for the, is an infographic. It's an example of kind of what we can provide. Um, we can manipulate the data that we have any way you would like. Uh, this is just an example. The next page is several of the resources that we have created, that, uh, teachers can plan lesson plans around during the month of February in Oral Health Month. The next page is an example of our consent form that goes home. We are working on electronic consent forms. Uh, my sister, uh, it's a sister program that I work very closely with. My friend Leah, she runs it in, in Purchase District. They send it out on Infinite Campus. It's wonderful. I'm working on towards that. That way, it's easier for parents. The next page is an example of what we send home for the parents, listing the urgency level. It gives information about what we did, why we didn't do it, and what is needed. That way, it's clear, the parents understand it. It's very, it's, it's simplified, so that there's not a lot there. Um, and then we give them oral home care information and a provider list if they do not have a dentist to start calling. And then we follow up at least three times to find a parent or a guardian, and then we do a safe handoff. Usually, we do six to seven to ten. If you are involved with children, you know what I mean. Um, and then we have to safe handoff that to a frisk. The response so far is on the next page. This is from several principals, parents. Um, we have not had any negative responses for our program. Uh, we are happy and blessed to be able to provide this program. I'm very passionate about it, like you can tell, I'm sure, and I will see it succeed. I hope to serve this in Bath County. I hope to provide this for any child that doesn't have insurance, or any child that does. I don't, it doesn't matter to me. Any child that signs up. Um, and on the last slide is my information. If you have any questions, or if you have questions right now, uh, we will answer it as best we can. But I hope that you will consider signing an M O A with the Health Department and allowing us to provide this care. Is there any questions? I know it was a lot of information, and I'm sorry about that.
Barb, I have a, a question. I want to know, I didn't understand clearly, is this for elementary students, or are you limited by what grade or what age?
We're not limited by age, but we are only providing it right now to elementary. I plan on expanding that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Will they get the treatment at school?
Yeah, we do provide that at school. We try to disrupt the classroom as little as possible. We don't, we're, we try not to come in whenever testing is happening. We come in in the afternoons if needed. Um, we gra- we grab about four to five kids at a time. We can see about twenty to twenty-five a day. Um, and like I said, we try to dis- And like I said, we try to disrupt the classroom as little as possible. So we take groups, and we kind of talk about oral care the whole time, and they just learn about how to take care of their teeth.
How do you coordinate that with the school, like with the principal?
So we've done it a couple of different ways. The last school that we were at really worked well. We print out a roster, and we called the front and kind of coordinated picking those kids up from the front. It worked out the best way that way. We have worked it out where, in some schools that I know very well, I know exactly where the classrooms are, and they know me. So it's a little bit less of a security risk because I'm six foot tall, and usually they see me coming. They know who I am. So, and I know where all the classrooms are. So we have done it that way, too. And in most of our schools, though, we print out a roster, we give it to the frisk, and the frisk helps us out a lot during the day. But we've done it several different ways. We kind of adjust it to the school and what the school needs. It's really not about us.
Do you ever put it in the packet at the beginning of the year so that the parents can, you know, sign off and have an information sheet of what you actually are in addition to what they are currently using at the school?
Yes, yes and no. We don't really, we don't really provide anything about anybody else. We just talk about what we do. And we are more than willing to show up at open houses, kindergarten registration, anytime that there's something that we can be a part of, we're there. And we send home the packet, the consent form, there's a letter. A lot of the school districts that work with our programs across the state will send out all calls and all texts talking about, you know, here's the date to send in the consent forms, that kind of thing. They help us out a lot. And I hope that we grow relationships like that eventually, to where we have the support, it's shared on social media, that kind of thing. But yes, we send out information in the beginning of the school in the packet. Hopefully, we can get to where it's electronic and it can go in Infinite Campus, too, just like a school nurse. It's easy that way, and it's electronic, and parents seem to respond to that better.
Anything else? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you.
Item eight, discussion and possible action to approve the fiscal year twenty-five tentative budget.
Sorry about that. I'll make the motion to approve the FY twenty-five tentative budget.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Brenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action to approve the FY twenty-four audit contract with KGSG PSC.
I'll make that motion to approve the FY twenty-four audit contract with KGSG PSC.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve the KEDC twenty-two, twenty-five cooperative membership agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve the KEDC twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five cooperative membership agreement.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Brenda, second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, discussion and possible action to approve the change order proposal for PR-10. Owner requested stormwater remediation for the BCHS Layvac Phase II BG twenty-two dash five twenty.
I'll make the motion to approve the change order proposal for the PR-10. Owner requested stormwater remediation for the BCHS Layvac Phase II BG number twenty-two dash five twenty.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item twelve, discussion and possible action to approve the change order proposal for PR-11. Owner requested welding booth power modifications for the Bath County High School Layvac Phase II BG twenty-two dash five twenty.
I'll make the motion to approve the change order proposal for the PR-11. Owner requested welding booth power modifications for the BCHS Layvac Phase II BG number twenty-two dash five twenty.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to approve the change order proposal for the PR-12. Owner requested welding shop lighting controls for the Bath County High School Layvac Phase II BG twenty-two dash five twenty.
I'll make that motion to approve the change order proposal for the PR-12. Owner requested welding shop lighting controls for the BCHS Layvac Phase II BG number twenty-two dash five twenty.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Brenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, other business?
I do have one item I'd like to, for the board, to publicly thank, Mr. Tim Thompson, for the wonderful job he did on our sign for the track in honor of Tim Bailey. I think it's beautiful. If you haven't seen it, it's worth a trip out by the end of the track to see it, and I think he did a very excellent job because we just gave his guidance as use your artistic abilities.
I agree, Brenda.
I think the board needs to recognize his good work.
I don't think, Tim's not here, is he?
He's out at the track working.
Okay.
Any other business? Item fifteen, motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS one-five-six dot five-five-seven six C evaluation of the superintendent.
Second.
Have a motion by Eric, second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, I do. You need it for the minutes. He took one copy. I need a motion to come out of executive.
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Have a motion by Eric, second by John, to come out of executive session. No action taken. I'm going to read the superintendent evaluation. The Board of Education of Bath County School District has completed the annual evaluation of Superintendent Steve Evans for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Four of the board members have served the full year with Ms. Razor coming on the board in September and have been able to observe and be a part of the successes achieved this year. The evaluation focused on the seven standards of performance as well as goals set by the superintendent. Superintendent Evans received a rating of development in the areas of strategic, instruction, human resources, and collaborative. In the areas of cultural, managerial, and influential, he was rated improvement required. The board will be working with Superintendent Evans to develop goals for our district for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We look forward to working together to make our school district successful. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn? Second.